Planning Commission and thank you all for being here. Just a word or two before we get to our approval of minutes and public comment and the agenda. Bill, thank you for, where'd you go? There you are. Bill, thank you for chairing for two years and, and everyone else for being on the commission. And some of you renewed. You have the option to renew or not to renew. So I'm glad that all of you who were eligible to renew did so. And look, we deal with a lot of diverse things from the really in the weeds, like a couple of things tonight and a little bit more, you know, a couple thousand feet kind of stuff. So it's important that we all voice our, our views on these and bring diverse perspectives to these diverse issues. So again, thank you. And unless there are any other introductory remarks, let's, let's look at the minutes from November. We did not meet in December and any comments on the minutes before we hear a motion to approve them? Okay, anyone want to get us moving on this?
I would suggest that we approve the minutes from the November meeting.
Second.
Okay, several seconds. Great, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, public comment. Looks like we have, you know, fairly straightforward agenda, a blend of things, but we also have some public here. So is there one not on the planning commission who has a comment related to something that's not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Let's go to the agenda before we look for comments. Well, I have a comment before we look to approve it. You might note that we, I talked to Amy and Todd and Mark before the meeting this week, and we thought rather than old business, new business, we should go with a kind of a priority style setting of the agenda. So you just see we have planning commission business. Some is old, some is new, and it helps to organize particularly where we know if their public comment on any of the agenda items, kind of organize it in a priority flowing way rather than going from the traditional old business, new business. So with that comment out, anyone else have a comment or, and, or let's have a motion, please, to move this agenda forward?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Bob, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Number five, site plan, five A site plan for tax parcel 251324. Staff.
On October 21st of last year, staff received from Pantera Engineering, a site plan proposing the change in use of the subject property in addition to an existing building and the establishment of a formal parking lot for the property. The property currently is approved for four primary uses, including Angelo's Pizzeria, which was an eating and drinking establishment, and proposes the addition of a second eating and drinking establishment, as well as maintaining the existing uses of storage and service establishment. An existing use garage is being eliminated with this site plan. Staff has conducted three reviews of the plan, the third of which was included with the agenda, as well as two plan sheets from the plan showing what is proposed. Both the planning commission and board of supervisors are required to review the site plan since FEMA map flood plain exists inner within 100 feet of the property. The actual flood plain does not affect any of the proposed work for this project. Once the site plan is approved, the applicant can submit both the change in use zoning permit application and a zoning permit application for the building addition and parking lot improvements. Staff's recommendation is to move to approve, remove to recommend approval of the site plan for tax parcel number 25-13-24 contingent upon satisfactory completion of all outstanding review comments for the principal planner and the zoning officer.
I have one question for Todd on the uses. And could you just briefly explain the difference between the garage and then this proposed service establishment?
Well, the, the service establishment and the garage use were both uses that were approved 20, 30 years ago, even before I was, I was with the township. There is historical records in the, in the, in the tax parcel file of these four primary uses, the eating and drinking establishment, the garage, the service establishment and storage were the four primary uses permitted for the property historically. This particular application seeks to get rid of the garage use and keep the service establishment use. We don't have a definition for service establishment. If that was going to be the next question, what that's, what that's going to be on the property, we just don't know yet.
Okay, so, well, I mean, they're going to keep, it sounds like they're going to keep auto repairs. Is that correct?
Well, we know for sure that Angelo's is going to stay, that a new restaurant is going to be in the same building as Angelo's. I don't know if the garage is going to stay. I've, I've, I've heard varying reports from different people on the future of that particular business there. It's possible it could, but you know, as long as the uses that go in, other than the two eating and drinking establishments, meet the requirements for the two remaining primary uses, there shouldn't be a problem with the township.
Okay, but a garage is an auto repair place. Is that correct or not?
Though, the one problem with relying on historical data is garage really wasn't a primary use in any zoning ordinance. So it may have been one thing 30 or 40 years ago where it might be something.
Okay, so that's, that's why they're eliminating, because there is no system.
Well, I don't know why that's there, what, that's why they're eliminating that, other than maybe they wanted to get rid of one primary use and they wanted to keep the other two.
Okay, I don't know. The way I was looking at the plan sounded to me like they wanted to keep the, you know, the two buildings in the back, right, that would be used for the service of automobiles, the way I was reading it.
Yes, service establishment is one of those uses they're keeping as well as storage. So it is, it is possible that they could keep the automotive themed use that's currently there and call that a service establishment rather than a garage. But I think service establishment, at least in my opinion, leaves it open for more, more uses in the future without having to come through change use process again.
Okay, okay. So you don't really know for sure what they want to do with those two.
No, no, but Mark Crompton from Pantera Engineering's logged on here. So if you have any specific questions, maybe he has some better insights since he's, he's in direct contact with.
Everybody, can everybody hear me okay?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, yeah, my, it doesn't look like my video is on. I don't know, but, so I was just making sure you could still hear me.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have any comments, Mark?
Basically, what, what they're trying to do is the, the small area on the side of Angelo's is what they want to utilize now, you know, for another eating, drinking establishment. I think they're thinking more of like a, just a breakfast place, excuse me. And currently, they have no plans to change what's going on in the other two buildings. One is a storage and I guess one is a, you know, a car repair, repair place. Right now, currently, they don't have any plans to change any of those uses.
Okay.
The only one that they would be adding would be that they've tossed around like a, just a breakfast area.
So storage and service establishment will allow them to keep those two uses in the back, which is pretty much the same way they are like right now if they, if they choose to.
Yeah, that's correct.
Look at the site plan or intent, obviously, you know, I'm sure you've all seen the site now. It's sort of, you know, people just pull in and do whatever the heck they want to around there. And, you know, I pulled in there and been a little lost myself. So obviously, you know, the site plan makes it a lot more conducive to, you know, parking and circulation and, you know, that type of thing and entrance and exits. And we did acquire our HOP permit, you know, for the entrances, so.
So the, it sounds to me like the overflow auto sales will not be occurring there anymore?
Now, that, that would be correct, because as you can see where that auto sales is there now, where they've just got all of the cars lined up. If you look at the site plan, that's a full parking area now for customers.
And then the, the bus, the school bus parking that was, used to occur there, is that going to be gone also?
You know, they're still going to have that property over there, but the, the site plan really kind of isn't really conducive to that. I'm not sure what their plans are for that, but you know, there's.
Okay, so that's, that's the adjacent property where the buses are? I'm asking that question.
Yeah, we did allow, you know, for access to that property, we did, the curbing there is kind of mountable, you know, because we weren't sure what they were going to do with it, just on that one side.
So is that part of the tax parcel or not?
Well, I think there has been some school bus parking on the subject property, and I think the neighboring property also has some school bus parking. So there may be times that it looks like it's intermingled or part of the same thing, but I think, I think it's two different things. I think it's also important, important to point out something that in response to a question Kent asked, we were told by the proprietor of the, of the, of the garage portion of this property, that he's not allowed to do car sales from that property. He can only do car sales from his other lot on the corner of Main Street. So we've been told up to this point that there have not been any car sales taking place there. Their state license doesn't allow any off-site car sales.
Right, so those, so they're going to have to find another location, possibly the fire hall, if they want to still continue to display extra cars.
It's really a staging area, and from what I've been told, they, they service the cars there and they do their, you know, their website pictures and all that stuff from there. I guess I'll have to have a conversation at some point after this site plan's approved to find out what their plans are, unless, you know, the current property owner wants to clarify that.
Okay, and then again, I don't, unless I'm not seeing something, I don't think the school buses are going to be able to pull in and out of this site anymore.
Now, there really wouldn't be much place for them to park without messing up the traffic, the interior traffic of the parking lot.
Okay, all right.
And for that matter, the storage of, of, you know, the, the, the pre-sold vehicles is going to be the same issue as the school buses, because you're going to have a legitimate parking lot there.
Well, it may be. I mean, when somebody, when somebody rents space or leases space for a property owner, it's entirely possible they rent a certain number of spaces to go along with that. So like I said, I'll have to have one or more conversations with people involved to find out exactly what the plan is.
What the plan is, right? Okay.
Should we be concerned with current or future ramifications from running a, a service garage there? What DEP requirements or others are there for a place that's dealing with, you know, hazardous waste that close to a stream, to a wetland, to a floodplain, engine oil, coolant, et cetera?
Yeah, I don't know how much actual detailed service goes on at that location, since they have all the tools and lifts and everything at their other location. It may just be washing and waxing and detailing and some light service stuff. Our concern obviously is that we don't want stuff to get into the stream, but I think that's more of a direct concern for the property owner, because it's their responsibility to make sure that doesn't occur and they would incur whatever penalties arise should, should it occur and DEP find out about it.
Is the repairing buffer there?
There is no repairing buffer, because this isn't a land development plan, and there hasn't been a land development plan submitted along this corridor since we've had the repairing buffer regulations that would trigger the need for an actual repairing buffer. There is FEMA map floodplain that's, that's marked on the plan, but there's no repairing buffer required or offered.
Does anybody else have comments on this?
Does this change their impervious percentage? Are they, because it's all gravel now, do we treat gravel any different than bituminous paving?
Yeah, we typically don't, and that's the call of the township engineer. My recollection, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, either Mark or Mark, I think the, I think the actual impervious coverage is decreasing slightly with, with what they're proposing here, that it's actually going to be more pervious area.
Correct. The current site plan is, or the, the, the existing site right now is actually under, you know, what the, what the, you know, pervious requirements are. So what we're generating here is we're actually generating more pervious area with this plan, you know, than is originally on the site now. So we're actually gaining pervious area and decrease, yeah.
And I just, I want to just clarify, Todd just said, in regards to compacted gravel, from a zoning standpoint, is that considered pervious or impervious?
Yeah, I don't know that I would say it's a, it's, it's either from a zoning standpoint, when the question comes up, I have historically asked the township engineer how, how that should be treated, and the engineers we have had throughout the years have said that stone should be treated the same way as pavement, because if it's not compacted, whenever it's put on the site, eventually it will be compacted and it, it will become impervious. So we have always treated stone as the same as pavement.
Okay, and I agree with that, and I'll bring that issue up again later when we start talking about stuff, please.
Does anybody, anybody else have comments or matters to raise on this issue? Bob? You're, we can't hear you, sir. All right, so the recommendation is to approve the site plan, right? So I moved to approve.
Recommend approval.
Yeah, I'm moved to recommend approval. Thank you.
I'll second that.
You've had it moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all. And the planning business, B, Bickle subdivision sewage planning waiver. Staff?
So last September, Stahl Schaefer Engineering submitted a minor subdivision plan that proposes subdividing a 223 acre parcel at 120 Cedar Run Road into two parcels. Once the subdivision would be complete, it would result in two parcels that are a little over 111 acres in size. This property has frontage along Earlystown Road, Cedar Run Road and Smith Road. There's an existing dwelling on the property as well as several other structures. The Harris Township subdivision and land development ordinance requires that sewage planning is conducted for all new lots unless exempted by the board of supervisors. So for this proposed subdivision, sewage planning would require submitting a planning module to DEP that identifies a suitable replacement area for the existing home on the property, as well as two absorption areas for the other proposed lot. The applicant is requesting a waiver to sewage planning requirements stating that they do not intend to develop either property. The applicant has submitted a request for planning waiver and non-building declaration form, which would need to be approved by the township in order to be approved by DEP, and that was forwarded to the planning commission in an email for you all to at least be able to take a review of it. Over the last several decades, Harris Township has not supported the use of sewage planning waivers, even in situations where no development is proposed. The previous township SEO had recommended against the use of these waivers, which is consistent with the guidance that we've been provided by DEP officials. I'll point out the fact that they do have this form, because it is a form of relief that can be sought by a property owner. And I have spoken with DEP over time, numerous times about non-building waivers, and they typically recommend against them. They say there's a few times where these could be, be okay, in particular, if you're strictly talking only agricultural land where no buildings or homes are involved. But they still recommend, even in those cases, that the township still heavily consider requiring sewage planning, because stuff can always be developed down the road. The subdivision process provides the township with its only opportunity of ensuring that suitable septic areas exist before new lots are created. So by requiring sewage planning at the time of subdivision, you can be insured that, that sewage planning isn't overlooked later when developed, the development is ultimately proposed in the future. If a waiver is approved and development isn't proposed for several years, it's also possible, impossible to ensure that staff will remember that sewage planning had been waived for this particular property. So it's our recommendation this evening that the planning commission discuss the requested planning waiver and non-building declaration and provide a recommendation to the board of supervisors. If the waiver is approved by the board, the planning commission chair will need to sign the DEP form, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Kent, I know that you had emailed some, some questions that you were going to raise. We could start with those or?
Yeah, I mean, and Mark answered my first question about, I was just being comical anyway, about DEP, about why do they have a form for it? But I know, they have a form for everything.
Just, yeah.
And, you know, and it looks, and a person that, that signed off on that application, is that our current SEO?
Yes.
Okay, so that, so our, our current SEO, I guess, was okay with signing off on that for whatever reason. I'm assuming that this subdivision is, is because of some, either a state issue or a family-related issue where they have to split the property exactly in half, because it sounds like they split it exactly in half. So, and once they do that, then it could potentially have two different owners and or it could be, you know, one or the two could be sold. And so I guess we could put a, you know, a big giant note right on, you know, right under the title of the page of the subdivision plan, so it's very clear that, you know, that this, the one lot would not have any sewage planning, absorption areas approved, and the, what I'll call kind of the existing lot would have one that's operating, functioning right now supposedly, but wouldn't have a backup. So I guess we could put a note to that effect, but certainly, if we're thinking that someday that these might get sold and, you know, and someone else is going to have that expectation that they can build a house on it, I kind of agree with our, our standard policy, unless they have some really, unless they've submitted some, I don't know, some kind of extenuating circumstance why they don't want to right now. Do you know anything like that?
I'm not aware. Chad Schaefer from Stahl Schaefer Engineering is on Zoom here with us this evening. He might have some more insight into why they're requesting this waiver in particular.
Yeah, I can, I guess first, can everybody hear me? All right?
Yep.
Okay. For, to answer the first question, part of this form is the, there is an actual note that is already on the subdivision plan itself, that is basically a rehash of the note number two that's on this form, that basically says there is no approved planning for either of these lots, and that appropriate testing and planning will need to be done at any, you know, at the time that a, that are structures, new structures put on these lots. That also has to be put on the deed. Both deeds that are created will have that similar language on there. So you have the recorded plan plus the, plus the deeds that, that'll, that'll reflect that. So there, you know, that's kind of your mechanism there to, to hold the owner or future owners accountable, that there's going to have to be some sort of, you know, the appropriate testing and planning modules and things in place at the time of a home being constructed. Second quote, point is, you know, there is no particular reason other than the fact that it is correct that it isn't an estate settlement essentially between Mr. Bickle, Leroy and his uncle splitting the lot right down the middle and a half to the square foot. I will say that this form has been used numerous times by myself, my firm, in other municipalities throughout the state, and we have never had any issues using that, you know, with future problems. Obviously, someone wants to build a house, they're going to have to get testing, they're going to contact Mary Kay and, and also the township.
I guess my only, my only issue was, let's say, you know, 20 years from now, you know, the family decides, they sell both lots and it's two entirely separate owners, and, you know, and the one decides they want to put a house on it, and they, they have the SEO come out and they find that there's no absorption there, it's on their site. And I'm being ridiculous maybe, but let's say that they can't find one. So that's, that to me is the advantage of doing it now, and that if there's an issue like that, maybe they can get an easement to put one on the other site or, I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're at risk by doing it, I think, on 111 acres, you're more than likely going to find a spot for, for, for an absorption area.
So I guess in that, given that, I'm not completely against this, I just would want, I did see that note on your plan, I would just want it repeated somewhere in bold print, maybe a little, somewhere where, you know, anybody that's looking to buy this would pull that plan, you know, and, and see that note very, very clearly. So I mean, I'd like to see that note repeated in a very prominent place, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm wondering whether or not the deed notification is sufficient in this situation.
Well, it's, it's for the, for the property, maybe, but not to the township, normally doesn't see the deeds and, and even, I don't know, I'm, I'm even just thinking a long time from now.
Well, yeah.
You know, and I'll, I'll make, I'll make fun of realtors right now and just say that, you know, let's say, you know, some realtor doesn't know that and just, and sells the property and misrepresents what's happening. If there's a big note somewhere a little more prominent that at least nobody could, you know, cry about it to the township.
Yeah, the, the point I was going to make Kent was sort of similar to what the point you made, 15 or 20 years, being, being the example that we've been using in this discussion. I'm not going to be here then, and Mary Kay's probably not going to be our sewage enforcement officer then. Mark's only one in this meeting, young enough that he's probably still going to be doing what, what we're doing here tonight, so, and he'll still be 20 years from retirement. So, so, so notes on deeds and, and things like that are good for real estate people and for the sale of the property from one property owner to the other. But the notes on the deed and the notes on the subdivision plan, if nobody 15 or 20 years from now remembers there was a subdivision in 2021, aren't going to do anything for Harris Township or for a new SEO. So from our perspective, I think it's, I think it's safer and it's, it's good planning, which is what we're here for, I think, to do the sewage planning. Now, of course, that's a policy decision of the board of supervisors. The planning commission can make whatever recommendation they like, just as the SEO can, and the SEO can't set policy either. They, they basically do what the municipality requires them to do.
Yeah, well, yeah, we don't have, I'm just trying to find the plan again here, because I, yeah, you sent it to us by email.
Yeah, while, Kent, 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 while, while you're looking for that, let me just, I have, I have two quick questions. This deck, this non-build declaration, what kind of heft or legality does that, does that carry with it, number one? And number two, it sounds to me like while now is the best time to do sewage planning, it doesn't sound to me like it's the only time to do sewage planning. And any development of the property moving forward would require sewage planning at that, at that development stage.
sewage planning at that, at that development stage. Maybe I'm missing something. It's not like these are, there's some redundancy built in here. But I'm not clear how, how strong number two redundancy is compared to the, the primary, if you will. So two questions for whoever can address those, please.
Well, I don't know that I can address them entirely. I would say at least the note on the plan from a legal perspective, it's probably a situation where as as long as those that are responsible to enforce the sewage management planning in the township are aware that such a note exists, it's probably quite legally enforceable. I think to your point about sewage planning needing to take place later on, I agree. I mean, even now, if you have a property that was created, you know, 150 years ago and someone wants to build a house on it, they don't have to necessarily go through the planning module process, but they would have to have the SEO come out and at least identify a septic system location. The thing is, I'm not fully aware if there's the requirement that the sewage planning on an existing property is the same as something that when subdivisions are taking place. For example, when we do a subdivision, I know you have to have a secondary absorption system location identified. That's one of the reasons why they'd have to have a separate location identified for the existing home on the, the, the one lot because it's a very old home and I don't believe it has a secondary backup system. So that would be part of the sewage planning process that would take place now. I think later in the future, I don't know if all of that would be required if somehow this note was forgotten. I don't know that all the sewage plan that's required now would be done then.
Thank you.
So I don't know, I found that plan and it, I don't know, the notes are fairly prominent, but I could see possibly adding a note right under the SEO signature. Just calling greater attention to the fact that this subdivision does not provide for it. It's requesting a non-building waiver and it does not provide for billing or a sewage module on either site. I could see maybe adding something like that underneath the SEO's signature.
Will that be sufficient?
I mean, it just, it just makes it a little more apparent for somebody that's looking at the plan or hopefully when you go, if you go to buy the lot, you'll, you'll pull this plan up.
Think of a burden, is it?
Right. That, I was curious about that too, Bob. What is, what is the burden to do sewage planning for the current, the two current landowners?
I mean, as far as, I'm not certain how much the fees are to do it. There's certainly a cost associated and some time. I don't know if Mr. Schaefer knows if there's a particular reason why they don't want to, if it's, if it is a time issue or a cost issue that they're trying to avoid. I think those are really the two aspects that they'd have to go through. Is just getting the testing done and filling out the forms.
Um, a little bit of both. You know, obviously the time issue. Just to get the estate settled, the cost is a factor. Leroy's basically has the whole burden of the subdivision plan. Everything else that we're doing with the property and now possibly the, the testing. And I'll be honest with you, it was, it was my recommendation because I've never to do it this way because in my experience, you know, doing this for almost 25 years, I've never run into resistance to placing, you know, doing this non-building waiver mechanism. You know, other, other than Harris Township. I've done this probably 50 times throughout my career. No issues at this point, you know, with, with something happening down the road.
Back, back to the burden question. Are we talking a couple thousand bucks in a couple of weeks or something a lot different than that?
Well, at this point, at this point, it's a couple thousand dollars and basically you're in January, so you can't do perk testing till maybe March at this point, maybe April, depending on the, or spring, how soon it comes.
So are you saying this is something less than five grand, $5,000?
Yes. I'm not sure what the fees are, what Mary Kay charges.
That's fine, just ballpark, just, yeah, just ballpark.
I'd say five grand is a good ballpark, maybe a little less than that.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other discussion or questions on this?
I think the only thing I would like to add is sort of the other side of that question we just discussed a little bit. Is there an advantage to the township or is there a benefit to the township to, to recommend approval of this request? I don't think of any right offhand and I'd be interested in knowing if anybody in the Planning Commission does.
I mean, Chris, if I could just chime in for one second on this item. We have subdivision plans and land development plans from the eighties that we're constantly having things come up now that none of us were aware of because none of us were there in the 1980s. Willowbrook's a good example. We found out that we have all these tiny little paths that kind of go to various points, but not really anywhere that are paved that are ours. And we found out that they needed some work done. And that was because I sat and researched the plan and found the notes. And so my concern, having been through this a couple of times now with having to pick through old plans to find notes and try to research back exactly what's going on. My concern is that if it's 15 or 20 years into the future, who's going to remember that that note is there and who's going to remember that there has to be sewage planning done? And who's not going to say that someone isn't going to go out and just try to sell the lot again, which, you know, it doesn't have any sewage planning done on it. So I just really caution about this because I think if, from staff's side, we've, we've spent considerable time, I've spent considerable time picking through some of these old subdivisions, looking for, oh, someone says we own this, someone says there's an easement here, where's that easement? What's this going on? We also have an entire neighborhood, Myers Estates, they have a stormwater basin. They're supposed to have an HOA to maintain the stormwater basin. I can tell you from sitting in on the HOA meeting they had two years ago, 90% of the people had no idea there was an HOA, even though it's on their deed and there's a note on their deed. 90% of the people had no idea there's a stormwater basin. The people that know there's a stormwater basin live next to it. So these things get lost. And even when you, you know, put a, a note in the, in the deed and you make them sign off, think about when you build a house or you buy a piece of land, you're signing a million pieces of paper and you're not necessarily paying attention. And it's something the manager, municipal managers have been talking with the Realtors Association about for a couple of years about, you know, there needs to be more due diligence done that when you're selling a piece of property to someone and there are notes and deed and important items, you need to call those out so they're aware of it. So I, I'm with Todd on this one. I don't think this is very prudent for the township operationally. Maybe, you know, in the future, there's some new technology that helps these things be tracked better, but right now it's a burden and I think it's going to be worse, you know, 15, 20 years from now. So just my two cents.
Given that the burden to the landowners is to me really modest and the concerns of staff, I, I suggest that we not approve this sewage planning waiver. It looks like we don't need to move on this, make it, make a formal decision, just make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Anybody, anybody want to, want to talk about this more?
No, I'm with you, Chris. I, I think that the chance of things falling through cracks is, is far too great. And, and Amy bringing up how onerous it can be on the staff to be able to follow up on stuff that we agree to today, but may not come up for another 15 years. And I think it's wise to make sure that, that the planning is done at the time of this, of the, the division.
Anybody else on this?
All right, can I just make one, one comment? I will say that while there is no future or no plans currently for any type of development, future development on either of these lots, other than what's there now. One thing to consider is the length of time that a perk test is good for. I'm not sure what your SEO is going to accept. So with that in mind, let's say it's, it is 20 or 25 years from now when someone finally decides, hey, I'm going to, I'm going to build a house on that lot to the north. Are those perk tests even going to be acceptable at that time? Or are they still going to have to do testing? You know, if I could say, yeah, we're going to, we're going to build a house there in five years. Okay, I get it. But you don't know the length of time when there is going to be, if ever, something constructed on new on either of those lots. And that's, that's just something to consider when you're making a recommendation.
That's, that's, that's helpful. Thank you. It's, I, there's redundancy. You know, the redundancy built in does have its time limits in a practical way. But we just don't know what that, that, that timing might be. So I think the fact that we have the redundant planning opportunities is, is there for a good reason. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Anything else in this before we move on to, to item C, the work plan?
Well, do we have to, do we need to make a motion?
I don't think so. Just a recommendation to the, to the supervisors or am I wrong on that, Amy?
I would like to see you make a motion because it is a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors and it will be discussed, I'm sure by them. So I would like to see.
Okay, I move, I move we not approve the sewage.
Try that again.
I move we do not approve the sewage planning waiver request. Amy seconds. All those in favor? The I?
I.
Opposed? Same sign? I think that carried, but it was a little unclear to me.
I believe that everyone voted in favor of it.
Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Schaefer. Let's go on to the work plan, please, for 2021. I noticed there are some things, you know, old, some new. Amy, do you want to talk us through this?
Yes. So you will present your 2021, not 2020, work plan to the Board of Supervisors at the joint meeting on January 27th at 7:30. And this meeting is going to be on Zoom. So it'll be a little different than in the past. So at the staff level, we went back and we looked at what you did in 2020, what was on your work plan. That's the blue sheet. Of course, the designated rural area project is at the finish line. I'm in the process of working with Mark and the solicitor and Todd to get the ordinances drafted. My goal is to try to get them ready so that we can present them to the supervisors on the 27th of January, when you guys are there, if there's any questions, they can be discussed. So that's at the finish line. You started your review of the residential zoning districts in 2019 and you did considerable work in 2020. We'd like you to finish that up this year and you have some of that on your agenda tonight. We have review of corridor overlay and buffering requirements. We're kind of proposing that this item for 2021 morph and instead of just being the corridor overlay and the buffering requirements, that changed to review of our remaining zoning districts. We have, you know, industrial zoning district, commercial zoning district, cultural, things that we still need to look at. And I don't know that we'll get there in 2021, but that moves us forward into 2022 if we have to. Review of the sign ordinance, this was on your agenda, this needs to stay on. And I do have, I just got a model ordinance from, not a model, model ordinance, but the ordinance that Ferguson Township adopted that's based on this Supreme Court case from Gilbert, Arizona. So we had a staff level need to look at that, talk with the solicitor and then get that to you guys to keep that moving. One item that we wanted to have a little bit of discussion with you tonight about is you had in 2020, your commercial alternative energy projects. So if you remember, we spent considerable time talking about the utility grade solar regulations. And ultimately, the Planning Commission decided that you wanted to wait for CRPA, CRPC to bring back a model ordinance. And then you wanted to see if perhaps that would fit what we wanted to do in the township and you could look a little more in depth at things. You did develop accessory solar regulations, which are just about ready to go. I think they are actually are ready to go. We just have to put them in ordinance format. Our question for you tonight is, we had discussed at one point also drafting wind regulations. So we were going to kind of wrap everything together. Do you still want to do wind regulations? Or would you prefer that we just move the draft accessory solar regs into an ordinance and get that ready for adoption here in the next month or so? And then you can talk about wind later if you want to.
Want to discuss that now or finish the, finish the list and come back to it?
Um, it's, it's your choice, whatever you guys want to do.
Let's, let's not get off track with the big picture of why don't you finish the full list and we'll come back and discuss this and any other that need a little thing in.
Okay. Next thing on your list was the update to the official map. We would like to slightly morph this for your 2021 work plan. So the official map, and I think Bob Igoe might be the only one that was around back in 2008 when we did, besides Todd and I, when we did the official map. I don't think anybody else was on the Planning Commission back then, but when that was done, it largely became between the Planning Commission and in particular the Parks and Rec Committee, like, let's just pick out these large pie in the sky things that, that we really would love to see someday and maybe they'll never happen. So on our official map, we have a bike path along the Bullsburg Pike. Well, there's really nothing left along the Bullsburg Pike to be developed, except for if the school would suddenly go out. So that would mean the township would have to commit funds to putting in a bike path. And I don't know that there's any support from the supervisors to put in a bike path along the Bullsburg Pike. So one of the things we'd like to do is we would like to come up for, come up with a process where we could actually vet what's on the official map now and prioritize those items and then do an update and work. And again, this would be with you guys, the Parks and Rec Committee and the Board of Supervisors. And then update it. And then one of the long-term goals that the supervisors have discussed is we have the special projects dedicated millage and they've said, you know, we could start banking some of that money away for open space. So we could use the official map as sort of that guidebook of this is what we'd really like to see happen. So we're going to put money away. So if the opportunity arises, we, we're ready to go, right? And then that's a little more transparent to the citizens as to what we're doing with that, you know, dedicated millage. So we'd like to see this process morph in 2021. The wireless facilities ordinance that was on your work plan for 2020, nothing happened on it. And it's kind of in a holding pattern because there have been changes almost every other day at the state and the federal level. And I don't really want to spend the money to redo the ordinance and then have to redo it again. We use the special attorney, cable attorney out of Pittsburgh anyway for this, Cohen Associates. So we would likely use them again. So this, this is sort of like in a holding pattern. And then we did manage like one or two continuing ed items for you guys, you know, with the world kind of blowing up in March, that became sort of lesser of a priority and a little bit more difficult over Zoom. So with that, we also would think that, I did mention, we think that you should add the remaining zoning districts, the review of that onto your work plan. With that, if you want to go back and talk about the commercial alternate energy projects and I'll answer any questions or if you have other ideas of things you want to put on the work plan, we can certainly talk about that. And then what I'll do is tomorrow, after, you know, our conversation tonight, I'll take some notes and I'll send you out a draft work plan for you to take a look at. And then if you can get it back to me by Friday, that would be great because I have to get the agenda out next week.
Okay. So just take note of that, all, all of you, please, is to react to the draft work plan that Amy will get to us in the next day or two in just a couple of business days back, back to her by Friday. So the question here in front of us is, we want to move ahead, the, the solar utility scales to the solar that we had talked about or or hold that and bundle it into a more, you know, overreached commercial alternative energy. Separate wind and solar or commingle them?
Do we know whether the center region is working on wind as well as solar? I know we're waiting for updated information from CRPC on, on on solar. Is anything coming from them relating to wind?
There is nothing currently on our work program related to wind. We are working on the utility scale solar and they're also actually looking at accessory solar in terms of barriers to like try to make it easier to get permits for those, but we're not looking at anything related to wind at this time. barriers to like, try to make it easier to get permits for those. But we're not looking at anything related to wind at this time. I have, I mean, I have an opinion on that particular item. First of all, I definitely don't think we should wait and package it with wind. In fact, I'll even take it a step further if, if we don't start to see progress soon on the utility scale. Solar, I would like to at least get the you know, the accessory use thing done, not let it prolong, maybe. I'll use, I use our number one priority designated rural area project as an example. I know it's not a good example, but I don't want it to drag out. I'd like to see that get done. So I'm hoping that, you know, that we can get the solar thing taken care of this year for sure.
Then lose any momentum on what we've tried to work on so far?
I would agree with what Kent just said. I also think there's some urgency to the solar energy because there's more and more demand and more and more developers moving in that direction. And we have not heard the same be true of wind.
Yeah, I agree. Anyone else, anyone else have comments on this?
It sounds like what I'm hearing is you would like to us to go ahead and move the solar, the accessory solar into an ordinance format, which I think will be fairly easy, and we could probably get done in time for the joint meeting on the 27th, which would then enable the supervisors to get it advertised if they're so inclined for their February meeting.
Great. That sounds good. Amy, do you need anything else at this time to draft the, the work plan for our review?
No. Do you guys have any comments or any other items you want to see added to your work plan?
I have one other comment, again, on the designated rural area project. Do you expect that we will actually get that to the point of actually having an adopted ordinance this year?
My goal is, and writing the ordinances is a big undertaking, but my goal is to have it to the supervisors in February. Like to talk to, talk to them and at the joint meeting, and then have it ready for adoption, March, April timeframe, depending on what all we have to do through the MPC to get it adopted.
Okay. And that joint meeting you said is a Wednesday, the?
27th at 7:30, and it'll be on Zoom. And I think probably what I'll do is to make it easier, because it's everybody, I might assign times so that you can just log in at a certain time. So you don't necessarily have to, you know, we don't have to juggle all these people on the Zoom call while we talk about. And we'll put you guys last, and then do the Shade Tree Commission, Parks and Rec first.
Okay, the only other thing I, Bob, go ahead. I saw your hand raised.
Yeah, I just we had the discussions in November about looking at density in residential or in R1. Do we need to, did I miss that? Or do we need to add it as a specific list?
The, the review of the residential zoning districts is still on your work plan for 2021.
Does that?
So that's included in there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good point. The only other thing I would add to the, to the, maybe a specific thing under the work plan, under continuing education. I had the idea and shared it with Amy that when the weather is a little bit better, we might hold some of our planning commission meetings in person. Say outdoors at a park or something and include that evening either before it or maybe not after, as it gets dark, but maybe a, a short tour of an area of the town. Couple of people in a car or individual cars if we need to social distance. But I'd like to suggest that we consider some continuing education around looking together at our own township properties, areas of concern, areas of development. Some of these residential areas that we're looking for higher density potentially. So nothing specific, just a little note that that might be a way we could educate ourselves in a slightly different way at some point when it's safe to do so. And the weather is a little fairer later in the year.
I think that's an excellent suggestion.
Anything else on the work plan before we move on? Okay. Commission Business Point D Village Zoning District Maximum Lot and Impervious Coverage Limitations. This is the long, it's the long three, two and a half pages here. So let's not please read all of this. Perhaps Todd or Mark, you could summarize, and then we can get to the hard part of this. I know I have a couple of questions, and I bet some others do too.
I'll go ahead and try to paraphrase this as best that I can. So back in 2019, the Planning Commission had started this residential zoning district review with the Village Zoning District. This was the idea behind starting with the village was we had the small area plan as kind of a guide. And it also is kind of, I thought, or at least I think most of us felt would be a fairly easy district to begin the review with. And after several months of work, the Planning Commission had recommended a number of changes, including some to permitted uses. Difference in how we structure the maximum minimum lot size, as well as some significant changes to both impervious coverage and building coverage limitations. And those, those coverage limitations, I'll just mention, there was a significant amount of work done in terms of trying to analyze the existing lot sizes in the village, as well as the existing, existing impervious coverages and pervious coverages that existed on them. So what happened was is this item was forwarded to the board, the, the updated village district was forwarded to the board last January. At which time they talked about it first in February, scheduled a public hearing for March. And then at the March public hearing, this was right before the pandemic hit. There was the public hearing, we had some, some testimony from the owner and operator of Duffy's Tavern. And after some discussion by the Board of Supervisors, they decided to forward this back to the Planning Commission for additional discussion. So what happened after that was with COVID-19 and us not being able to meet in person, this kind of got put on the back burner a little bit. Because it was going to be difficult to really have, I think, a good fruitful discussion and also public comment. And also, I think we were all hopeful that we'd be able to meet in person again fairly soon after this, but that did not happen. So ultimately, the board sent this back to the Planning Commission for you to discuss. It's been some time, so we wanted to, to kind of reacquaint you with the issue. And we also think it would be a good thing to have on your joint, on the meeting agenda with the board here on the 27th. So just as a reminder, I'll go through a few of the high points here. As far as the maximum lot coverage is concerned, the existing coverage in the village district is 25%, and that applies to all structures on a parcel. What we did is we looked at all the, the lots that are in the village. And ultimately, we recommended that this be increased from 25% to 35%. That would reduce the degree of non-conforming lots that we have in the village currently, and would also provide a lot more opportunities for some property owners to maybe do small additions, build a garage, things of that nature. And I think that that is something that was kind of a common sense increase that would benefit most property owners. And then the other significant issue was the maximum impervious coverage. This is your pavement, sidewalks, things like that. This, our existing impervious coverage limitation is 70%. And that was established back in 2015. There was no real study done at the time. It was just based on some other limitations in other municipalities, because what we were doing at that time is we were establishing impervious coverage limits for every zoning district. So there wasn't a lot of in-depth analysis done. As part of this review, we did that analysis and recognized that we actually have a lot of properties that could still be could still have a lot more pavement installed on them. And I think there was a concern that if we kept it 70%, some of the stormwater issues that already exist in the village would be exacerbated, as well as the fact that there would be the potential for just a loss of character as a result of, of having more impervious coverage in the village. So the, the Planning Commission recommended reducing that impervious limit from 70% to 50%. And this is where I think the pushback came from the owner and operator of Duffy's Tavern, as well as from Supervisor Graham. There were some concerns that, you know, this was going to really stifle some folks' ability to provide changes on their property. I think ultimately there would be some limitations on some properties. They wouldn't be able to pave as much as they once could. But as you can see in the table that was included in the agenda, there's a great reduction in the potential amount of, of impervious square footage that could be installed in the village. So 70% was what was initially existing. 50% was what was proposed. The 60% number is thrown in there just as kind of a, an idea to get an idea of how many lots would be non-conforming if it were to be changed to that. So it's our recommendation that this evening, if you have any questions about this item that you let us know, or if there's any additional information that you need, as I mentioned, this is something that was going to be on your agenda with the board on January 27th to kind of to discuss this with them, maybe share some of your opinions on to, you know, why these, these restrictions, reductions and increases were viewed as a meaningful thing for the village. But we want to make sure you're as informed as you need to be, because we know it's been about a year since you last saw this. So anyone has any questions or needs any information, please let me know. So, and then, and based upon what you were saying earlier, and you're estimating, you're roughly estimating that that the Duffy's lot is currently approximately 60% impervious. And then in that estimate, do you presume that the, all the gravel area is impervious? Yeah, and, and we did. Now, again, we did this, all this analysis just based on aerial photography. There certainly could be some stuff that we labeled as impervious that is not, and vice versa. We didn't do a property by property in-depth. You know, if somebody was going to do a site plan, they would have to do all that calculation. But just, I mean, and it sounds like this whole discussion is based upon that one comment. I don't hear anybody arguing about the, the building coverage being increased. And it's just a matter of which impervious do we go to? I, I would still agree that we should, as a trade-off for increasing the building coverage, that we should lower the maximum impervious coverage. And I think, as I recall, I was even debating whether we should go with 50 or 60% back when we were discussing this earlier. So I'm still in that, that ballpark. I'm not totally opposed to 60%, which would roughly get Duffy's kind of conforming. Maybe, it looks like you're saying there's nine properties that would be non-conforming. But if we would allow compacted gravel areas to be paved or, you know, further improved. You know, existing areas, even, even if they were non-conforming, let's say they were, let's say we've stuck with 50%. And they were at 60. I'm presuming we would still allow them to pave over the existing gravel areas. Does that sound accurate or not? Todd can correct me if I'm wrong, but I would think that if it's already existing impervious, and they're just changing this, the form of impervious, they would be able to do so. Right?
Yeah, I agree, Mark. I was just having trouble getting my cursor over to the, on you button.
That's helpful. That's helpful to know for sure.
I'm, I'm definitely opposed to keeping it at 70 in the village district. That to me is kind of a commercial slash industrial type impervious coverage. And so I would like to see us, you know, I would still like to see us reduce it either 50 or 60. And you know, and, and then I may, maybe we need to discuss more at our workshop that some of these sites could, you know, it's not going to hurt them that much, I don't think. Especially if they're non-conforming, they can continue to do some things.
Can I ask what the, what the, their concern is, what the Duffy's folks are concerned about?
Sure. So from my understanding, they wanted to sorry. Did you have something else you were saying? I missed what you said, Bill. I apologize.
I, I say, what, what's their beef with all of this? What is their, what is their concern with the change? If they're non-conforming in the grandfathered in, what is their their concern here? That they can't make any changes in the future? Because if they pave over what's already gravel, it doesn't change anything, does it? Do they lose that grandfather?
No, I, and I'm not going to presume to know all of their concerns. I mean, Todd, feel free to jump in if anything I say here sounds off, but my understanding is the owner wanted to replace a cooler in the backyard at some point. There was a concern that obviously with that cooler, if it were to get larger in size, that might create a problem in regards to their impervious coverage. As well as building coverage under our current limitations. I think they are right at 25 and a half percent building coverage. So they would benefit by that change, but the impervious would not help them. It would, it would hurt them in this regard. Since they're pretty close to 60%, and we're, you know, talking about reducing it even further than that. But there's also the, the argument that if they got rid of a little bit of impervious coverage, they could probably still build cooler that they want to build out back. Now, that's been something that I think had been talked about for a while. I don't know if they'd ever bothered to draw up a site plan. I know we, I've never seen one. At least even illustrating where they stand at on these limitations. So it's hard to know what impacts this ordinance change would have on them entirely, and if there would really be no way for them to mediate them.
Yeah, and I would add that every conversation I've had with everybody that I've talked to about the the coverage issues at Duffy's has included me stating that until somebody does a a reasonable analysis of what exists on the property, we can't adequately answer the question about what they can do. And that information has yet to be provided.
So it seems to me that the concern is really speculative. They don't, they don't know. And they're asking for an exception or reconsideration based on information they don't really know, and they don't really have plans for. So I, I'm not sure what we should change, because it doesn't seem like they have any plans. They just want the option.
I think that's a really good way to, to frame it, Amy. And I'm a little, well, staff, is it your recommendation that we have a conversation with the Board of Supervisors this month, or did they ask to talk with us about it? What was the genesis of that?
So right before the world blew up, they had a very lengthy meeting, March 9th. And they said they wanted to send this back to the Planning Commission. And we had always intended to put it on one of your agendas, and then everything sort of turned upside down. So we thought, because we knew you had, we sensed you had pretty strong feelings on the topic from when we had discussed it before. So we thought maybe to move this somewhat off the dime, and so we don't have to keep coming back to it. It would be good if we brought it up at your joint meeting, because you guys will all be in, obviously, in the same virtual room together, and you can then have a discussion about it and, and see if anything is, see, see if they have changed. I, I don't know if any of them even remember this was discussed on March 9th, but see if they have any strong opinions or some questions, or, you know, if they have some other direction they want you to go. Mark or Todd, correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just add one comment. In regards to tying this to stormwater improvements, I would personally prefer not to do that. I, I don't like to mix the stormwater ordinance with zoning and subdivision regulations. Because I mean, you should do stormwater management anyway and comply with that chapter. I, I don't know what chap, I forget what chapter it is in the Harris ordinance. But so I think they should be doing that and comply with stormwater management, whereas impervious coverage is, is more of a zoning thing. And yes, it, the implication is to have some open space and some some area for absorption. I know it has some similar reasonings behind it, but I think it's separate. And I personally am not in favor of tying impervious coverage to you doing something like putting a rain barrel out. I don't, I don't agree with that.
Is there, is there any other discussion or questions or comments on this impervious and lot coverage matter?
I, I seem to recall that we spent a great deal of time discussing the maximum lot coverage issue, and 35% was a, a kind of a compromise that we came to. I, I prefer to keep the maximum lot coverage as is recommended. You know, I'm, I'm not sure that I feel so, you know, absolute about 50% on the, on the impervious, but I could be easily swayed, let's put it that way.
Thank you, Bill. George, it looked like you were going to-
Yeah, I do, I do have, I do have a question. It's from my own edification. In the sense that, that, do I have it right? That if Duffy's were to propose changing anything, and we left things as they are currently, or if we go with the proposed change, let me put it that way, that, 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 that 60 would be out of the question for them, and they'd have to go back to, they'd have to conform with the new requirement of only 50% impervious?
Yes, if they propose something new after the ordinance changes, they would have to abide by the new ordinance for anything they proposed. Going back to a previous statement, we really don't know what they have on the property. So we don't know for sure if that would be a problem or not.
So they're grandfathered, so long as they don't change anything. But the minute they change, when they do change something, they would have to conform to what we changed it to.
Well, I, I don't know that they're grandfathered as to impervious, because it's currently at 70%. So they may very well be in compliance with that. We, we have a greater concern with the 25% lot coverage of just structures, that they might already be over that. That's a little bit easier to quantify through aerial photographs than impervious coverage is. So they may be, they may be already over the 25%, the 35% would probably take care of their problems, so long as they didn't propose anything too large.
So is it, so could it be just as simple as that they don't want anybody telling them what they can do with the outside of their property?
It could.
I mean, that's, that's kind of what I'm reading.
Seems to be a theme.
So what I, what I'm hearing, and if I could, if I could suggest that when we have this conversation later in the month with the Board of Supervisors, I'm hearing in general that we deliberated a long time about the 50% and the 35% coverage and lot, maximum lot coverage numbers, and that we feel those were well-reasoned, and that we'd like to recommend those be adopted by the Board of Supervisors. But this question about this one property that kicked it back to us, I'll say right here, I think that's a little odd, that one property was enough to kick this back down to the Planning Commission, but it's happened, and we'll move forward with it. But when we do talk about it with them, that, as Amy well put it, it's speculative. They don't have anything specific that they're looking for. So what else does the board want from the Planning Commission in terms of, you know, insight or rationale or, or background? Sorry, I was a little rambly there, but what I'm hearing us is saying, let's go with our plan. And if they want to pick it apart in some way or fashion, we're ready to talk about it with them. But ultimately, or eventually, I'm hearing us wanting to stay with the proposal that we originally presented. Is that right?
I agree.
Okay, I don't think we need to do anything more on this unless people have more comments or questions about it. Okay, here, hearing none. Let's talk about the agenda for next month, please.
Do we know, Todd, Mark, if we're going to have any plans?
There is a slim chance that there will be one plan, depending on the response to first set of review comments that went out today. Based upon what we found on the plan, it might end up being a preliminary plan rather than the minor plan they had thought that they were submitting. But that, that might change based upon our comments. I don't, I don't know if we have any other plans or modules or anything else that might be ready. Mark, do you remember any?
Would K-wood North Estate lots be?
That's a possibility, if, you know, if they get, if the reviews don't result in a ton of comments, yes.
From, from planning items, I'll just mention, we may have some of the discussion regarding our residential or one district that we had talked about previously. That might be on the agenda next month, depending on how much time Todd and I can get to carve out to work on it.
That was one I was hoping would be, would be up there, the development densities. But let's, let's make that a goal if we can. If we have to push it to March, then we, then we have to push it to March. Anything else on next month's agenda before we move on to reports? Are there zoning permits that we need to pop down to the office to sign?
I seem to remember the November meeting telling you that there would be a couple months prepared, if you'd give me a week or two, and I think I did those. And now we're back to give me a week or two for the next couple of months. And I should have those reports done. So don't, certainly don't run into the office this week. If you don't, if you don't have to, next week would probably be better.
Amy, are we allowed to run into the office now?
Um, no, the front door is locked. However, if we have something you need to sign, if you want to touch base with us ahead of time, we'll let you in the back door. You have to wear a mask, and we do ask that you please bring your own pen.
Okay, that's clear and commonsensical. Amy, thank you for representing the township to the Center Region Planning Commission. Do you have a report to share with us?
I have nothing to report. The group did not meet. We will meet at the beginning of February for the first time.
Okay, okay. And George, thank you for representing the township to the, to the technical committee. Anything to report?
Yeah, just a brief, just a brief report. We did have a meeting the day after the, our last get-together. So that was on November 17th. We had a meeting in the afternoon. There was some discussion of the Route 80 connector project. But since then, there has been a lot more discussion. The, the, the PennDOT posted their draft of the purpose and needs. And it was discussed by the Board of Supervisors. A letter was issued back to them regarding our comments on it. And then that kind of went silent for the holidays at that point. Also discussed at that meeting was the CADA Transit Asset Management Plans and their results for 2020, which were not good. They, as can be expected, they were kind of bailed out by the CARE monies of somewhere in the neighborhood of $9 million that came their way.
Wow.
They're at, at low ridership levels and, and doing a lot of brainstorming and a lot of conversations with all the municipalities that they serve, as well as, as well as the MPO and counties, county folks. Then there was a discussion about the state moving to performance-based planning, which is happening. And that's an interesting development, because tip monies for the future will be development, not distributed based on achievement of safety goals. Some of the issues assigned to that are the result, or have to do with people having, trying to make sense out of the safety data that came through for the last couple of years. And some of the goals are, seem a little onerous for us to comply with. I've offered my help to Tom and his people to try and do some analysis of some of those actual data numbers to see what challenges can be brought forth. So hopefully, making those goals achievable.
Are these safety goals things like transportation or sewage, or what?
No, these are, these are, these are mostly oriented towards accidents, fatalities, and, yeah, the, the, the roadway safety, basically. And, and then, and then, of course, the whole issue, when that was, as that was being discussed, the whole issue of, of COVID implications, the implications of COVID to, to budgets and tip money availability in general arises. And all that is, you know, still way up in the air in terms of just how, how bad that scenario was going to be. But it's a, it's a very fluid situation in terms of, 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 you know, what, what the, the transportation budgets are going to look like going forward. More to come.
Certainly, certainly state and municipal budgets are really pressured around the, around the country, around the world, of course, where they have been. So, yeah, a lot, lots of unknowns there. Hey, Amy and George, thank you. Anything else on from our, from our two regional reports? Amy, anything else, or anything you want to report on recent supervisor actions?
Yeah, just a couple of things. The board did approve the Rocky Ridge Section 5 Final Subdivision Plan. And then I wanted to go back and touch on the State College. It's officially called the State College Area Connector Project, the Pell Study that's going on. One of the discussion points, and one of the things we sent back in our letter, our comments on the purpose and need statement from that, was that we would like the project to be referred to as the Route 80 Connector Project, because the trucks are trying to get to Route 80. They're not really trying to go to State College. They're trying to get to 99 and go west. And the supervisors mentioned, we had done a statement back in 2017. So we reiterated our statement, our position statement, which is that we do not support any route that brings the truck traffic through Harris Township, and we support the more direct route. We've started, Supervisor Harden is our representative to that group. We've started a list, sort of on my computer, of things that we think he needs to bring up at these meetings. One of the points that Supervisor Graham brought up was that we need to hammer home the point about climate change, and that lower emissions would actually be a better thing, and giving a more direct route would actually help. So I don't know, I think we're fighting a bit of an uphill battle, because when they named it the State College Area Connector, I think they have an idea of where they want it to go. I don't think they know, but I think they have an idea of the direction they want it to go. And I don't know if we get PennDOT to pivot, but we'll see. And then one other traffic- Oh, sorry.
The, the language there is very important. I mean, to spin it as a Route 80 connector is, it's the way to go. Good thinking.
Yeah, and then one other traffic-related item. Some of you may remember that for, oh, the last 10 years, we've been trying to get PennDOT to lower the speed limit along Route 45 West, Shingle Town Road. We have two residents who live out there. One lives on Farm Lane, and one lives in Mountain View Acres, who are very motivated and passionate about this. And so we've actually been meeting on Fridays. And the supervisors, two of the supervisors joined us last Friday. We have an officer from State College Police joining us this Friday to brainstorm things that we can do to try to convince PennDOT that maybe reconsidering out there is a good idea. The one woman's husband is a civil engineer and does a lot of work with PennDOT. So he brings a lot of knowledge to the table, which is great, because we've all sort of discussed that PennDOT's never going to change the speed limit just to change the speed limit. But we're going to talk about some traffic calming things this Friday. George is going to join that call. I've been very impressed with these residents, because they sort of took it upon themselves. You know, they wanted to see this change. And when I explained the uphill battle and gave them the background on the 10 years of the battle that we've been going on, they hopped in, and, you know, they have jobs that do not involve municipal government. And they've jumped in with both feet, and they're learning, and they're, you know, they're very engaged, which is wonderful to see. So hopefully, we'll get some traction. I know Barrett Smith mentioned to me today from State College Police. He said that he thinks we really need to partner with Ferguson Township, because they have some of the more geometrical challenges up on their stretch of the road. Get their crash history. And he said, maybe because they're going to make the changes to the Route 45-26 intersection, we might be able to get PennDOT to do that whole corridor study, which is what we had asked them to do before. We're also pursuing legislatively, working through Senator Corman and Representative Benninghoff's office. And then I did stress to the residents, and I stressed to everybody, if local police were able to use radar in Pennsylvania, we're the only state in the Union where local police are not allowed to use radar. If local police were able to use radar, every single one of my speeding complaints goes away in the township. And that's all I hear all summer. So if you have any, you know, if you have something to do, you guys that are newly retired, and you'd like to write an email, there's a new bill that's going to be introduced again. This is the third time in the last probably three years. We support capping the amount of revenue you can bring in from that, because I know that's a concern, but honestly, it makes our roadway safer. And the one thing we've seen with the pandemic is that people are out and about walking Route 45. There are four bus stops right there that kids are crossing 45. So if you want to take up a cause, I give you a local radar cause. And I can, I didn't, I did an interview with Comcast Newsmakers all about local radar, so I can send you the interview. I was very impassioned, so.
Thank you, Amy. It sounds like those two motivated residents should be on our radar screen for future Planning Commission members.
Yeah, I definitely think at least one of them. I'm not sure about, the other one has kids and might be better suited on our Parks Committee. But yeah, I definitely think one of them might be good on here.
Good stuff. Anything else tonight before we wrap up? Thank you all for a good, productive meeting, small stuff and bigger stuff, too.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Several seconds, all those in favor of adjourning this meeting? Aye.
Aye.